Good morning. As Chair of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees, I will call to order this quarterly meeting of the board. First, I want to thank Dr. Algais and the entire FLVS leadership team for the hard work and preparation you have put in today's meeting. And I also want to recognize and thank our FLVS teachers and staff for the tremendous work you do on a daily basis for our students and families across the state of Florida. With that stated, let us proceed with the roll call. Mr. Moore, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Here.
Dr. Tony Arsa.
Here.
Mr. Robert Crenarans.
Present.
Mr. Ed Poswoli.
Here.
Ms. Mercy Radcliffe.
Here.
And Dr. John Martra. And as we said, he's having some technical signing problems.
Okay, thank you. Next, I will open the floor for any opening remarks from our co-chair and fellow board members. Dr. Arsa?
I just want to say I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving and thank you to the team for preparing us for today's meeting.
Thank you. Board member Crenarans?
Yeah, Dido, thanks for the preparation as always and have a safe holiday.
Thank you. Board member Poszoli?
I hope everybody had a great holiday and thanks again for the preparation.
Board member Radcliffe?
Good morning likewise. Glad to see everyone after the holiday and I just would like to thank Dr. Algais, the entire leadership team for just your time and commitment and doing all the preparations for today's meeting.
Thank you. I second everybody's remarks, so we'll keep going. Thank. Turning to the minutes of past meetings, we have for final review and approval, our September 3, 2024 Quarterly Board Meeting Minutes and November 12, 2024 Agenda Review Workshop Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action and approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, the board will receive public comment. Before we begin, I would ask speakers to observe the following ground rules pursuant to the board's bylaws. Public comments should be pertinent to board agenda items. Individuals who wish to speak during the public hearing on Agenda Item 9.1 are asked to reserve their comments until the opening of that public hearing. Each speaker is limited to a two-minute comment period and cannot yield time to another speaker. If the speaker runs out of time, they are free to submit the remainder of their comments in writing. Speakers must state their first and last name for the record before delivering their comments. Please refrain from comments or behavior that will cause a disruption to the orderly conduct of this meeting. Speakers may ask questions, but please know that board members and FLVS officials are not required to respond. Rather, it is their prerogative to respond. Further, any such responses will be delivered after the public comment period. Any speaker who does not comply with these ground rules may be subject to a warning and potential removal from the meeting. Finally, speakers should note that this meeting, including the public comment period, is being recorded. Thank you. Operator, are there any members of the public who have called in and wish to speak to the
There are no callers at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the public comment period. The board will now proceed with its public business and turn next to Section 4 of our agenda for CEO comments, reports, and presentations. Dr. Algais?
Thank you, Chair Ryder. Today's CEO comments, reports, and presentations include three agenda items. Our first item is the Quarterly Financial Report for the period ending September 30, 2024, and Ms. Corey Wheeler, Senior Director of Financial and Treasury Services, will review the report. Corey?
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Good morning, board.
Good morning.
The charts I will be sharing with you provide a snapshot of our financial information, including year-to-date completions and year-to-date actuals and projections. This will give you an idea of where we stand fiscally. The year-to-date informations for completions is presented graphically for the quarter ended June 30, 2023, and 2024 current year using blue and red bars. Annual revenues and expenditures are also reported as of June 30, 2023 prior year and June 30, 2024 using gray and yellow bars. This chart shows year-to-date completions for three categories: part-time or flex, virtual learning lab self-pay, and full-time. For the period ended September 30, 2024, completions for flex total 133,281 as shown in red, an increase of 4,965 from the prior year of 128,316 as shown in blue. Completions for virtual learning lab self-pay for the quarter ended September 30 are 5,702, an increase of 3,373 as compared to 2,329 in the prior year. Completions for full-time for the quarter ended September 30 or 45, an increase of 37 as compared to the prior year. This chart shows prior year actual completions compared to projected completions for this fiscal year. Actual completions for flex as of June 30 were 567,573 as shown in gray compared to projected completions of 558,000 as shown in yellow. While we are hopeful we will surpass this projection, we are remaining conservative in the budgeted completions and associated staffing due to several factors, including the removal of the online course requirement in the prior year and the expansion of the scholarship program to include additional homeschool and private school students who are formally flex. We are projecting a slight decrease in FTE in virtual learning labs and self-pay at year-end from 54,168 at June 30, 2024 to 49,000 at June 30, 2025. This is the result of a reduction in lab enrollments offset by an increase in scholarship students. We are projecting full-time FTE to remain relatively flat, decreasing from 103,915 at June 30, 2024 to 102,000 at June 30, 2025. While the size of the full-time program remains unchanged, the timing of the completions varies from year to year and causes variability in the forecast. This next chart presents revenues and expenditures for the general fund through September 30 for both current and prior year. General Fund is the operating fund of FLVS and includes expenditures and revenue related to flex and full-time. Year-to-date revenues through September 30 increased 8.1 million from 80.4 million in the prior year, as represented by the blue bar, to 88.4 million in the current year, as represented by the red bar. Year-to-date expenditures through September 30 have also increased 2.6 million from 71.6 million in the prior year to 74.1 million in the current year. This chart presents prior-year actuals compared to projected current-year actuals for the general fund. Revenues at fiscal year-end are expected to increase from 344.3 million (the gray bar) to 371.0 million in the current year (the yellow bar). This is a result of an increase in FEFP and interest revenue. Year-to-date expenditures are also projected to increase from 328.5 million in the prior year to 330.9 million in the current year, 339.3 million in the current year. Fund balances anticipated to increase from 146.1 million to 177.8 million. This chart indicates revenues and expenditures for the Enterprise Fund through September 30 for both current and prior year. The Enterprise Fund consists of FlexPoint, FlexPoint Virtual School, Franchise, and the Florida Scholars Academy. Year-to-date revenues for the Enterprise Fund through September 30 decreased 375,000 from 14.3 million in the prior year to 14.0 million in the current year. Year-to-date expenditures through September 30 have increased 4 million from 4.9 million in the prior year to 8.9 million in the current year. The increases related to FSA expenditures, which are reimbursed. And lastly, this chart presents prior-year actuals compared to projected for the Enterprise Fund at fiscal year-end. Revenues are projected to increase from 42.5 million in the prior year (the gray bar) to 65.7 million in the current year (the yellow bar). Of this amount, 23.9 million represents revenues generated from out-of-state sources. Year-to-date expenditures are also projected to increase from 29.6 million in the prior year to 57.9 million in the current year. Net operating profit is projected to be 7.7 million. Transfers out are projected to be 14.8 million. Transfers out fund course development and operating development projects. Fund balance is projected to increase to 76.3 million at June 30, 2025. Of this amount, DJJ revenues are projected to be 26.1 million. Expenditures are projected to be 31.6 million with a net investment required of $5.4 million. We are working closely with the DJJ to align the budget with additional funding streams, which includes federal and state grants, to ensure that we have the resources necessary to provide students with an outstanding education. And that's all.
Thank you. Corey? Any questions for the board members? All right. Next up, we have Ms. Beth Brunner, Executive Director of the FLVS Foundation. She'll share with you the FLVS Foundation's December 2024 Quarterly Report.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. The foundation has been awarded matching funds from the Consortium for Florida Education Foundations. Our three program priorities to be addressed are STEM. The foundation has entered into a memorandum of understanding with the National Center for Simulation to further expand STEM camps for students. In addition, programs in the application of STEM technology were provided to FLVS teachers and support staff by way of in-person learning at the annual professional learning conference, virtual learning seminars for up to 25 teachers, and various STEM activities throughout the year. This important program is being created because of feedback from teachers and students who participated in the foundation's past two years of STEM camps. Lockheed Martin internship program. The foundation is working alongside FLVS career and technical education leaders in collaboration with Lockheed Martin to develop a new student internship program. Students will be selected to participate in a pre-internship learning opportunity on interviewing skills, presentation skills, and other important communication techniques. Two to four FLVS students will then be selected for the Lockheed paid internship after applying and interviewing directly with the company. During the internship, students will learn about engineering, assembly, program management, manufacturing support, and planning. Lockheed Martin is also funding our grant for Great Ideas and STEM Grants. Third, Florida Scholars Academy. The foundation is working to prevent recidivism by partnering with FSA leaders to implement a program that incentivizes students to continue their education and graduate or attain their JED through FLVS Flex. Those who do not have internet access, a laptop, or both, may have the opportunity to be provided with these tools by the foundation. Our next steps will be to continue to raise funds for allocation of the match for 2024, 2025. Approximately 104,000 will need to be raised by September 1, 2025. And the foundation board did identify our strategic plan for '25-'26. The areas of focus, with assistance from FLVS leadership, the foundation's board of directors, areas include education, career planning, pathways to success, arts, professional learning, health and wellness. The development of industry partnerships is important to continue to support career and workforce programs for FLVS students in concert with FLVS career and technical education programs identified by the Consortium for Florida Education Foundations and the Florida Department of Education. This concludes the foundation quarterly report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, no questions, but I think I mentioned in the prior meeting and mentioned it again, I want to thank Member Crenarans for bringing some donors to Beth who helped, some sizable donations to help them meet some of those needs. And once again, thank you, Member Crenarans.
Do we ever get the Wahoo Bay schedule for the kids?
Yes, they're working on it. They're, it should be very soon. But we do have one of our instructional leaders working with the teachers and getting the proper documentation taken care of, so that'll be happening soon.
Yep. For everybody's knowledge, Wahoo Bay is at the Hillsborough Inlet, and we take kids on a dive boat up to Wahoo Bay, let them get in the water. We have a reef that we built, and it's a kind of STEM education program. If anybody's interested, I can get you some information, but just getting different schools. And I sponsored our kids to go on the boat.
Yeah, I would have shanked room, but you'd have to wear a wet suit. Nobody wants to see that.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Beth.
Yeah.
Next up, Section 4.3 is our student highlights. We will feature our recent Annual Professional Learning Conference, highlight some of our students, and end with one of our works of art stories. I know this is always our favorite section of our board meetings. Three weeks ago, we held our Annual Professional Learning Conference. It was great to see many of you there in person. Conference is an opportunity for our staff to elevate their knowledge and expertise and to meet the evolving demands of online education. It's also an opportunity for our teachers to earn required certification hours. The conference was initially planned for September, but had to be postponed because of Hurricane Helene. Despite the Dane change causing some team members to miss the event because of prior plans, we still had more than 2,700 in attendance. During the three-day event, we hosted three general sessions and offered 259 breakout sessions, including our student panel that some of you attended. And the energy, the passion, and innovation that our team members bring in this conference is inspiring. I love hearing the ideas and seeing them learn from one another. Conference provides the opportunity to reaffirm our collective commitment to continue to move our organization forward, and I'm super proud of our team with all that they've accomplished. Slide 14 here. We're going to start with our student spotlights. And taking courses, as you know, through the Florida Virtual School provides our students with flexibility to pursue their dreams, experience one-on-one lifetime opportunities, and to learn when and where works best for them. FLVS has given Jacob Pham the opportunity to live out his Broadway dream in New York City, allowing him to follow his passions while staying up to date with his education. Flexibility to study and get schoolwork done during times when he's not practicing or performing for The Lion King has been a huge benefit during his journey, and we're very proud and congratulate Jacob. It's an awesome accomplishment at such a young age. Also, thanks to the flexibility FLVS afforded her, Juliette Karzac was able to take her culinary talents to the Florida Department of Agricultural Lunchroom Awards, where she won the competition with her Florida Portobello Bruschetta burger. That looks delicious. Congratulations to Juliette. Niko Solovic was able to attend the U.S. Open Tennis Championship, where he had the honor to flip the coin for a match between two tennis stars. And Maya Solly loves the flexibility FLVS provides as it gives her more time to spend with her horse Mona. Maya even introduced Mona to her homeroom teacher during a video call. We love that students like Maya can learn in the environments where they feel most comfortable. And our last item is our works of art story. Navigating obstacles is part of every student's journey, but it's the connections that our teachers forge along the way that truly shape the student experience. With a repertoire of dad jokes, Joey Acavino, science instructor for FLVS Flex, makes connections that help the well-being of his students. And Lord knows, I like a good dad joke. Go ahead and play a video highlighting him.
Joe not only builds bridges with his students, their families, but also his colleagues and everyone that he comes into contact with.
Biology is tough, and we acknowledge that right from the start. And one way that Joe helps students feel less stressed out about the actual biology content is he has on his class homepage a section that has a million tips and tricks to make students successful in the course. He also sends out hysterical memes for the kids.
Joe is famous for his dad jokes. One time had told me that his students really look forward to doing excellent on an assignment or quiz because they get their dad joke.
The dad jokes are a quintessential example of what Joe does to just kind of break the ice. You really have to earn that level of trust and earn that motivation with the students. The dad jokes are just one example of how Joe just takes the time to break the ice with the student, get them comfortable on the welcome call, so that he can really learn that student as an individual and figure out the ways that motivate them, what their interests are.
David is a nonverbal student. Mr. Acavino is the first teacher David has ever connected with. Somehow, Joe was able to get David to get to the phone and then took that relationship piece just a little bit further. He started talking about Star Wars, and David is a very big fan of Star Wars. Making that connection with the student then opened the door so that Joe's dad jokes that he sends weekly to his students, David started taking these dad jokes and telling his own father verbally these dad jokes who's overseas. So Mom was in tears telling us that's the first time that she's heard David interact not only with his own father, but with a person outside of their family unit as well.
He just is able to go that extra effort to just make sure that the student understands that he sees them for who they are and make sure that those connections are constantly being made throughout their time with him in FLVS, and he does the same thing with his colleagues.
He's always going out of his way to make sure that his students are thought of and they're, you know, they feel special and important.
The social and emotional well-being of our students is extremely important. Making the student feel safe to communicate is going to set that student up for future success, no matter where he goes.
I think what makes this story very special is that it truly lets everyone see the value in just taking that extra minute to bring a smile to someone's face.
He truly meets everyone where they need to be met, learns about them as an individual, and finds ways to just brighten their day.
And you just feel that he has that passion to get to know you for who you are.
What a great, great model teacher to be with. I'm just so thankful to be a part of the schoolhouse that has him in it.
He truly just embodies all that we are at FLVS and builds those bridges with everyone.
Thank you, Joe, for focusing on the whole student and fostering genuine connections. Joe's story is just one of the countless inspiring moments that occur every single day within our organization. Our team members are truly exceptional. This concludes the CEO report. And I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Ryder.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? I'd like to just say how much I enjoyed, and I think I speak for the rest of the board members that were there, the annual learning conference. I'm going to thank everybody later, but it was remarkable, and I got to meet a lot of those teachers, and it was, they're amazing. So thank you very much to everybody for that. All right, we will now move to our consent agenda items at Sections 5 and 6 of our agenda. Dr. Algais, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. We have one proposed consent contract agenda item for the board's consideration and approval, and it's 5.1, increasing contract spend authority. And for Item 6, for annual reports and forms consent, we present and propose five reports for approval as consent agenda items. 6.1 is the Florida Virtual School Full-Time '25-'26 K-12 School Calendar. 6.2 is the '25-'26 Florida Virtual School Employee Calendar. 6.3 is the approval of FLVS Foundation Board of Directors member Dr. Neil Finkelstein. 6.4 is our FLVS Quarterly Staff Data Report for Quarter 2. And lastly, Item 6.5 is our Disposal of Assets, and we request the approval of the recommended actions for 5.1 and 6.1 through 6.5.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there an omnibus motion to adopt and approve the recommended actions on Consent Agenda Items 5.1 and 6.1 through 6.5?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will now move to the discussion items of our agenda. Dr. Algais, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. We have one financial item for the board's proposed discussion agenda, and I welcome back Ms. Corey Wheeler to present this item.
Thank you. 7.1 is the Fiscal Year '24-'25 Budget Amendment Number 2. The purpose of this proposed Budget Amendment Number 2 is to recognize and approve updates to the ending fund balance of the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Internal Service Fund, and Enterprise Fund in the FLVS Fiscal Year '24-'25 Annual Budget, which reflects revised estimated revenues and appropriations impacting each such fund. The fiscal impact of this amendment on the ending fund balance for the General Fund is a net decrease of 800,000, changing from 130.1 million to 129.3 million. Revenues increased by 134,000 and appropriations increased by 936,000. There is no fiscal impact of this amendment on the ending fund balance for Special Revenue Fund as revenues equal expenditures. Revenues increased by 38,700 and appropriations increased by the same. The fiscal impact of this amendment on the ending fund balance for the Internal Service Fund is a net decrease of nearly $15,000, changing from 27,319,000 to 27,304,000. Revenues had no change and appropriations increased by 15,000. The fiscal impact of this amendment on the ending fund balance for the Enterprise Fund is a net decrease of 68,000, changing from 70.78 million to 70.71 million. Revenues increased 2.4 million and appropriations increased by 2.48 million. Back to you, Dr. Algais.
Thank you, Corey. Any questions? Very well, thank you. We request your approval on recommended actions of Item 7.1.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the recommended action on Agenda Item 7.1?
Motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Algais, please proceed with our next item.
Thank you, Chair. One, we have a number of proposed FLVS board policies, policy revisions, and repeals up for first reading. We will request the board's authorization to publish the text and provide public notice of a hearing on these proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals, and Karen Chastain, our Deputy General Counsel, will review these for you. Good morning, Karen.
Good morning, and happy holidays to all. This agenda item proposes 11 policies for first reading. There is one proposed new policy, nine proposed amendments to existing policies, and last, one proposed repeal of legacy policy PS009. For the new policy, we are proposing Policy 5505, Academic Integrity. This is a new policy proposed by our third-party vendor for this subject matter, and we are proposing the adoption of this policy to track updates and revisions as time goes on, but we already have the details set forth in the adopted Code of Student Conduct that the board approves every year. The remaining eight amended policies, there are eight amended policies as a result of federal revisions to the Uniform Grant Guidance Regulations administered by the Federal Office of Management and Budget. These eight policies are in Chapter 1,000, there are five in Chapter 6,000, and two in Chapter 7,000, and all of those details are set forth in the agenda item. The last amended policy is to military leave in Policy 1430.07. This is the result of 2024 legislative changes, which is the reason for this amendment. Please let me know if you have any questions, and we ask for the board's approval of this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. We're requesting for your approval of the recommended action on Item 8.1.
Thank you, Dr. Algais. Board members, are there any questions? Is there a motion to adopt and approve the recommended action on Item 8.1?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Algais, please proceed with our next item. We will now move to the board's consideration of the proposed policies and policy revisions set for public hearing at Section 9 of the agenda. As board chair, I hereby open the public hearing on Agenda Item 9.1, Proposed FLVS Board Policies, Policy Revisions, and Repeals. Rather than retaking roll call, I will note for the record that Co-Chair Arsa and Board Members Crenarans, Poszoli, Radcliffe are also in attendance at this hearing. The purpose of this hearing is discharge the board's obligations under Florida law and to provide for the greatest degree of transparency pertaining to the development and adoption of FLVS board policies. The subject of this hearing is the board's consideration and potential adoption of changes to its policies. The board earlier authorized publication of the entire text of the proposed policies and repeals before us today, and it also directed public notice of the date and time of this public hearing. Now, having been duly and publicly noticed in accordance with Florida law, the proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals are before the board for further consideration and final action. Specifically, we are asked to adopt the proposed policies, policy revisions, and repeals described in and attached to Agenda Item 9.1. Accordingly, the board will take up public comment at this time, and speakers are reminded to observe the speaker gram rules to which I earlier referred. Thank you. Operator, are there any members of the public who have called in and wish to speak to the board on Agenda Items 9.1?
There are no callers at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the public comment portion of this hearing. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Dr. Algais, do you have any comments before I take up a vote?
Nothing, other than we request your approval for the recommended action on 9.1.
Okay, thank you. Is there an omnibus motion to adopt the recommended actions on Agenda Item 9.1?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Algais, please proceed with our next item.
So, next up, we have our closing adjournment coming up here, but first, we have our General Counsel comments, so turn that over to Dr. David Dagata.
Three general comments for the board and for Dr. Algais. Number one, Dr. Algais, thank you very little for that image. Uh, three general comments, uh, for the board and for Dr. Algais. Number one, Dr. Algais, thank you very little for that image, uh, that you planted in my mind earlier. Number two, uh, just another shout out to the whole squad, uh, and Karen and OGC for the policy development. And also for our enterprise compliance team. Once you have those policies, you've got to go ahead and ensure that they're, uh, put into place, uh, and enforced and followed. And, uh, Dr. Canitas and her team, her entire squad are doing just an excellent job with that, and I want everyone to know that. And with that, I also wish everyone, uh, happy and safe holiday upcoming. And we'll look forward to our gender review workshop February 25 of 25.
Thank you to our general counsel. Board members, are there any questions? We will now turn to the CEO for any closing remarks. Dr. Algais?
Thank you. Keep it short. Value your ongoing support as always and our commitment to our students and families and the staff. And if there's anything I can assist you with, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. And I wish you all very happy, healthy holiday season coming up here. Um, and glad to see your continued good health, Chair Writer.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Board members, are there any questions?
Just a comment. Um, I just wanted to share that I had the immense pleasure of attending the conference again. I truly enjoyed it, but I also wanted to say that I, I um, especially appreciated the session that I attended right after lunch where Dr. Algais led a group of, uh, high performing educators. And I just felt that was so valuable that, um, we not only highlighted and acknowledged their, their, you know, their performance, but also just got some great feedback and ideas. I'm sure there was good that came out of that. And so I just wanted to say that I really, um, appreciated that. That was a, that was a great session. So thank you, Dr. Algais for, or whoever it was that had the idea of doing that. So I thought that was great.
My pleasure.
Thank you. I, I was also there with you, and I agree. That was very impressive. Finally, I will, will you, you, you want to finish up with, um, your, your final remarks?
Yes, I'll just, as we conclude, I'd just like to once again express my gratitude to the board members, the entire leadership team for your contribution to FLVS. I'm really looking forward to what lies ahead, not only for the organization, but for the students, for the families, for the teachers that we serve. So I, I'm, um, looking forward to this next year. Thank you. And happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you so much. Okay, Dr. Arsa?
Yeah, I just wanna, um, wish everyone a Merry Christmas as we head into the final stretch here. And a happy Advent to season. Um, and I want to thank the staff for preparing us for today's board meeting, all the information, all the presentations that happened, um, and makes these meetings go so, so quickly because of all the work that you guys put in to make it extremely clear for us. Uh, also, I want to thank, um, the team for organizing a time for us to meet in person. Obviously, you know, we are a, a virtual organization, and so it's really important those moments when we're able to kind of transcend the screen and engage with each other uh, in person, especially with our staff and our teachers that do the hard work every day. So I want to thank you all.
Thank you. Board member Pozoli?
Well, I wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. Um, uh, I also wanted to, uh, uh, the chair, uh, I welcomed the idea that the chair forced me to attend the early morning session uh, in person and, and I got a lot out of it. It was, uh, it's quite a sight to see. It never, uh, should never be lost on us, uh, what our responsibilities are to all those folks who provide um, education to all those kids that, uh, that avail themselves to the services that, that we provide. So I think it's, it's, it's always a good, uh, always a good time and a good understanding about what we're, what this organization is about and who, uh, makes it happen on the ground. And so, uh, you gain a greater appreciation uh, by the sheer enormity of the number of people that are involved to make all this happen. So I want to thank the team for making that happen. The event, uh, I know went off, uh, without a hitch and it was well done. Um, and I wanted to particularly thank the chair for making me attend in the morning and, um, wishing everybody a Merry Christmas.
I was right, Board Member Pozoli. I, I told you that you weren't going to be unhappy about doing that. Um,
I, I promised I was there and I promised you I'd be there and you doubted me, but I was there.
I did doubt you. I thought you were in an early train.
Better late than never.
Right. He did show up.
To be fair, we all doubted you.
Thank you, Dr. Algais.
You feel better. Thank you so much, Dr. Algais.
Um, I, I want to thank everybody for, of course, putting this all together and, and, um, I think Dr. Arsa said that your preparation makes this go so fast for us and it, it, it's, it's great. So thank you all for that and all the work you did.
Dr. Watred has joined us.
Oh, yeah. I mean, not, not at the very end of it and, and somewhat frustrated with, you know, authenticator and all the rest, all the restrictions you have to go through because you're outside the US. So, um, but thanks to IT people that were able to do it, but unfortunately I was able, it wasn't, uh, soon enough to get into the meeting. So.
Well, we, we're we're happy you're here now. Do you have any opening and closing remarks? You can do it all.
I, I, I was just listening to, to Ed's comments. The, the, the meeting in Orlando was great. It was great to be able to attend it and see everyone and, and be part of that. Uh, uh, so, and, and, you know, when you see the, the, the size of the organization and what it is to, to get that and what we provide through FLVS, uh, through then, through that, that large network to, uh, Florida for education is, is phenomenal. So a credit to everyone that was involved in doing that and a credit to all the, the people involved, the teachers and all the staff that, uh, were there that, uh, make, uh, FLVS successful.
Thank you so much. We're happy to see you, even if it's just for a minute, but we're glad you made it. So thank you. It was good seeing you.
And I also want to say to Dr. Watred that at least now you've tested our cybersecurity and you know that it is very difficult to access our system.
For sure.
America first. We, uh, photo virtual is America first.
You get in, you get into this little, uh, cyber loop that, uh, you think you're getting somewhere and then suddenly it brings you back to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The 13 hour, um, time warp. 13 hour time warp.
That's a 13 hour time warp. It takes a long time for these things, signals to get back to the US.
Well, we're happy you're here. Um, a, um, oh, but I forgot my, okay. I forgot my train of thought, but whatever. So I, I just wanted to make, make sure that we, that we acknowledged what an amazing job um, the staff did to put together that, that, uh, learning conference. And after the, um, initial cancellation and then putting it back together again, I, they told me it's, it was less than eight weeks. And it's, it's incredible for something that size to have done all that work. So I want to thank everyone who was involved in that. I don't want to miss anybody, so I'm not going to say any specific names, but it was an amazing job. And it was great seeing all of you, um, in person and meeting so many of the teachers. I got a chance to talk to a lot of them and, and, um, it, it was, it was wonderful. So, you know, thank you all very much. Have a wonderful Christmas and happy Hanukkah.
Chair, could I, uh, you kind of skipped over me there.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
Yeah, I thought you were playing with the spine. I was going to interject.
Well, you weren't there, so you get punished.
On this big guilt trip that I wasn't there.
I'm so sorry.
I think the board conspired just to do all that nice things, but I wasn't there. But I'm putting it on next year's calendar.
Hey, Rob. Hey, Rob, I'm getting grief. I was there. I'm still getting grief.
Oh, my God.
Anyway, I just wanted to, yeah, no problem. I just want to thank everybody. You know, when you can look at a product that we put out, the graduation rates, the kids, everything, and then you have one of the best places to work with all, you know, our great administration teachers and, and the leadership that we have, and then to look at the financial portion of the whole organization. It's, uh, just proud to be part of, of this team and, uh, keep up the great work in 2025 and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to all.
Thank you, Rob. And I'm sorry again. I don't know what happened.
And by the way, Chair, I was going to say you look really, really good and I'm happy that you're back and you look wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm, I'm happy that I'm getting to celebrate this holiday season because I kind of missed the last one. So I'm very, very happy to be part of this one. Um, you appreciate what you didn't have and, uh, I'm appreciating it. So thank you all and, um, yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year to everybody and, and, uh, be safe. And I'll thank you all for doing this so quickly.
Yeah.
Take care.
All right. Oh, wait. No, no, wait.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Hurry up before Dagata includes his report. Let's go.
Aye. All opposed? Oh, no. Motion carries. I'm so confused today. Thank God you're all here. All right, have a great.
I knew I'd be attacked. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a great holiday, everybody.
Bye.